Our agenda.
I move that the agenda of Monday, December 9th, 2019, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Have a second?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Just to note that Director Anhalt is joining us by phone this evening. Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Garlock? Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Borchadeem?
Aye.
Director Mersbrock?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye.
And next, we will move to the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you very much, President Humbles, and thank you all for being here tonight. We have had a plethora of activity over the past couple of weeks and lots of things to celebrate. Most recently, Friday was our State of the District event. So appreciative of a really nice turnout at that event and so many of our partners and members of our community coming to that. It was emceed by our very own District Communications Director, Akwe Enje, and this theme's, uh, this year's theme for the event, which has actually been the theme for our entire year, has been Cedar Rapids Community School District as a hope spot. And so, we highlighted some of those hopes and great activities happening as well as evidence of the progress being made by our school district, starting with President Humbles, doing some celebration updates. So, our elementary reading scores being up for two years consecutively, as well as the state report card indicating that nineteen of our schools had at least one level higher this year than they, or last year as they had the year prior, and that we're, continue to work on our strategic partnerships to enhance and leverage momentum for all kids in our district. I also shared some system indicators of robust goals and things that we're serious about. Whoa, do I look serious in that picture?
[laughing]
But that, uh, some of, we have, uh, laid a stake in the ground about system indicators we're serious about for all kids in our district, and that is by June 2022, we will reduce gaps in reading and math across all student demographic groups by twenty percent. By June 2022, at least eighty percent of our students will demonstrate annual growth on the new state assessment. That's called the ISASP assessment. We'll hear more about that later this evening. And at least eighty percent of our students will score proficient or advanced on that same assessment. And that by June 2022, we will increase our graduation rate by ten percent. We're currently nearing eighty-seven percent across our district. Greg O'Connell, Principal of Coolidge Elementary, also made some comments about our exciting project of our new elementary school being built on the Coolidge site, and was able to share some drawings from our architects of that new building. And then the grand finale, there they are, Coolidge students who sang an original song that they composed with their music teacher, Amy Hanish, that highlighted our theme of the year called "A Hope Spot," which they definitely stole the show, I must say. So, a lot of exciting things happening, for sure. And thank you again for everyone who was able to attend the State of the District. We've had a lot of awards coming around. There he is, the Teacher of the Year for the State of Iowa is Mr. George Anderson from Kennedy High School. Our very own Governor and Director of Education, Director Wise, came to present that award to George last week. That's George and his family and the Governor and the Director. This is a prestigious honor. There is only one teacher selected across the state for this honor, and George will be the ambassador for our state for education as a teacher for the months to come. So, we're very proud of George, very proud of Kennedy High School, very proud of Cedar Rapids Community School District. So, George teaches social studies. He has dedicated his life to service, started his career as in the military with the Marines, and then had a calling to teach, and so, continue to serve in his future role as the Teacher of the Year. Sean Baylor from Franklin Middle School, as honored by the School Administrators of Iowa, as the Associate Principal of the Year for Secondary Schools. Again, only one administrator is, gets that honor for that particular category each year. Sean has been in his role since 2007 and been a, not only administrator, but also a teacher, and certainly dedicates his life to kids. Some words from Sean and things that he lives by. He says, "It doesn't matter where you come from. What matters is the work you're willing to put in to accomplish your goals and reach your destination." And the Executive Director of SAI, Rohr Corn, added, "Sean exemplifies everything school leaders can accomplish with students, colleagues, and an entire learning community. He continuously prioritizes what's best for students. He serves and has their interests at the forefront of any decision-making. We are so fortunate to have him represent Iowa and the Assistant Secondary Principal of the Year." So, congratulations to Sean. Aaron Stacker from Kennedy High School has been really distinguished with a very prestigious honor. He has received the Certified Master Athletic Administrator Certification. Very, very few athletic directors get that distinguished certification, and so, congratulations to Aaron, highly committed to his role as an athletic director. And the hard work that went behind this is a long resume of hard work, so definitely a nationwide professionalism and distinguished mark for him. So, congratulations to Aaron. And congratulations to our Buildings and Grounds Team. They won an Asphalt Award. I had no idea these existed! It's awesome! So, the recipient of the Quality Construction Award, Athletic Use for the Running Track at Kingston Stadium, it's won its category, and the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa's Quality Construction Awards Program. This recognizes that there's been quality paving done in the state of Iowa, and so, John Galbraith and Chris Gates, on behalf of our Buildings and Grounds Team, accepted that award last week. And then, just one final reminder, it is December, and guess what's around the corner is winter break. So, just a reminder that we will not be in school in session between December 23rd and January 1st till the beginning of the year, so wish everyone a safe break over the winter season, and also, this is our only board meeting for the month of December. So, certainly, best wishes to everyone over that winter holiday break.
Thank you so much. It lets us know that we have some outstanding people that work in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. And I was able to attend Kennedy. I was thinking about all the graffiti that was thrown up. I said, "Who, who has to clean that up?" [laughing] But it was, uh, it is. That's why I'm so proud to serve as the Board President. We work really hard, and it shows by the recognition we receive as a district. So, thank you. Do we have any board reports?
I have a board report.
Okay.
Jennifer Bertranding and I both attended Community Conversations on Safety and Violence meeting last week. It was an outgrowth of the SET task force that completed their work and wrote their report. This, uh, this group of, of community organizations has been brought together by the Lynn County Public Health, and they're looking at safety and violence in the community and ways that, as a community, we can address that. They had a speaker there from the University of Iowa by the name of Derek Willis. We spent most of our time in small groups answering three questions. What do we see in our community that's unsafe? What can we do about it? And who's not at the table with us discussing these issues? So, we did a lot of brainstorming. It was the first meeting of this group. I was really impressed with the diversity of community organizations that were there. I think the work before us fits well with the community schools model that we're looking at as well. There are, there are a lot of needs in our community, and this is a way for all of us to come together and address the safety and violence. So, I think Jennifer and I intend to continue attending those meetings, and we'll keep reporting back.
Any other board reports?
I would just like to mention that we were able to, as a school board, except for Director Mersbrock, we were able to attend the Iowa Association of School Boards Conference Convention that was held in Des Moines, and it was really wonderful. I think IASB put together kind of a, with the new election dates, they're, they're, the board members are kind of jumping in and then going to conference right away. They had some sessions that were specifically for new board members, which I, I compliment IASB on providing that. I think it was really helpful, and it was just a really good opportunity, a professional development opportunity for board members, and am thankful to District for that opportunity.
Anyone else? Thank you. Now, we'll move on to communications delegations and petitions. And I'd like to remind those that are, that request to address the board that when your name is called, please state, when you, when your name is called, please state your name and address for record when you reach the podium. You will be given five minutes for your remarks, and Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and inform you when your time is up. So, the first person is Lisa Geisler?
Hi, my name is Lisa Geisler. My address is 1014 F Avenue Northwest in Cedar Rapids. I just would like to start this by saying that the comments that I'm going to make, you can find referenced in an email that was sent to all of you earlier this afternoon, and it will include a link to the court case that I'm going to cite in this. I'm here tonight to draw your attention to a practice that I have come across in my work with immigrant families over the past two years that can be very difficult for these families to comply with. That is the practice by schools in the Cedar Rapids District when enrolling new students to ask for a birth certificate or other legal documentation. While the immigrant population in Cedar Rapids encompasses people with widely varying statuses, this practice would seem to specifically target those without documentation, which are the most vulnerable students in our community. This practice is also out of line with the 1982 court case of Plyler versus Doe, which ruled that all students, whether documented or undocumented, are allowed access to a free public education. While this court case does not explicitly say that asking for legal identification is untoward, the implication is inherent in the final ruling. If one asks for identification, one is in fact asking parents and children to bear the burden of proof of documentation. The Cedar Rapids School District, in our opinion, is skating the boundaries of the law by asking this question, and in doing so, is putting our community's children at risk for a potentially damaging stigma as they try to live, learn, and improve the circumstances of their lives and families through a guaranteed education within our borders. As I mentioned, immigration statuses vary widely. This policy is most challenging for our asylum-seeking and undocumented community members to comply with. Often, they have faced long and challenging journeys to the U.S. in which documents like the ones you are requesting have been confiscated, often by our own Border Patrol. In other situations, the documents that we are used to having available to us as U.S. citizens are not available in other countries. And I would like to point out that earlier this year, as my colleague who is here with me tonight and I began intervention with our most recent asylum-seeking family into our community, they were denied the right to enroll their children at Washington High School. It was not until we engaged with an immigration lawyer who was able to do further education with the personnel at that school that they were allowed to then enroll and start attending classes. I'm here tonight to ask you to reexamine this practice so that our district policies can reflect the inclusive nature that I, as a parent in the Cedar Rapids School District, know is already present in our individual schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Jason Snell.
Jason Snell, 3105 Allegheny Drive, Northeast Cedar Rapids. I'm here with the Sunrise Movement. I want to thank you all for being kind and tolerant of our climate strike on Friday in front. Got a lot of smiles, and I appreciate that. We have started working with the county and the city discussing carbon emissions from the different larger entities here, and working on climate emergency resolutions and climate plans. The thing that I wanted to share with you today is the scope of the problem as it'll hit Iowa specifically. I think most people in general understand that there is a problem, but I actually didn't understand the scope of the problem until this last year, and I really dove into what the UN has reported. So, I'm just going to share some data, and then I can follow up with emails tomorrow. So, currently, you know, 2020, you know, we have flooding and drought cycles destroying our farmland and disrupting our agricultural seasons. So, you know, if you drive across the state, you'll see that some corn still hasn't been harvested. That was from floods in the, in the spring. There's rising costs for municipal damages, and then, sub-zero winters are happening more and more frequently because the jet stream has been disrupted, and so, that pushes Arctic air further south. Within ten years, and this was from, we learned this from farmer interviews, two-thirds of the fruit will be gone. And so, when you go to the grocery store, that fruit will be gone, and that's a permanent loss. We'll have to start doing planned retreat and abandonment of frequently flooded areas and farmland. I think Time Check is a good example of that in our past. And then, food and water scarcity will increase. By 2050, the middle of the century, worldwide, there will be a billion climate refugees, and in the United States, there will be tens of millions. And so, we'll see climate refugees from Central America and the Southern United States fleeing to Northern states, and so, that's something that will impact Iowa. How do we accept those climate refugees as they're fleeing to the north? Because of damage to farms, farm yields will be dropped by fifty percent, but at the same time, our world population will have doubled. One of the things, as carbon increases in the air from burning fossil fuels, is nutrition drops in our crops, and so, we'll have a nutrition crisis worldwide. And also, at that point, we'll have widespread heat and respiratory deaths, and a heat death is particularly brutal way to die. By the end of the century, along our current trajectory, we'll have lost fifty percent of our species worldwide. The farmland here will be going through a desertification process, so we will lose our local economy, our food supply, and our water supply will be severely damaged. There'll be so much carbon in the air that there'll be a twenty percent reduction of brain capacity, so even our ability to solve the problem at that point will be reduced greatly because our brains will have less oxygen. That's some that disturbs me greatly because I love my brain, actually, you know, grew up in the school system here, and it was an outstanding education I received here. And then, also, at that point, we'll be seeing large-scale refugee camps. And then, into the next century, at that point, we'll have to do a mass evacuation of Iowa and flee to the north, to Canada and Alaska. And anyone who's still here at that point will become climate refugees themselves, fleeing north. And in terms of environment, really, only the healthiest humans will be able to survive those conditions, so... The stark thing about that is when each of those happen, each of those steps, it's irreversible. So, really, the reason that we're working so hard right now is that this decade is the time to act to reduce carbon emissions. Once we cross that threshold, it's like an avalanche, it'll start cascading, and so, the rest of those things will start happening. I wish I had better news, but I just want to give you a, a context for the work we're doing at Sunrise and why it's so important to us, and we work with a lot of young people who are absolutely terrified about their future. So, I will follow up tomorrow with an email. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for that information. Next is Betsy, is it Bastian?
Bastian.
Bastian.
Hello, I'm Betsy Bastian, and I live at 2631 Beaver Avenue Southeast. And I'm here with the Sunrise Movement as well. I chose this city to be my home. I was raised by an elementary school guidance counselor who taught me the value of public education and its example in leadership and social justice in our communities. When public schools advocate for those in need, systemic change happens. I am here to be your cheerleader and to help the school district beat the odds of climate change. Last Friday evening, at the Cedar Rapids Climate March, a student, Elijah, from Arthur Elementary School, stood on the steps of City Hall and said, "In ten to fifteen years, there may not be enough people to support my school." And I like that school. What Elijah doesn't know is that he was speaking for the children that are not yet mine, for the future nieces and nephews that have not been born, and the future grandchildren of this community. There are young people in this community who fear the increasing number of natural disasters, water supply shortages, food rations, and other known effects not guaranteeing children a future in result of climate change. I fear this community will fail, but I do have hope. I have hope in an education system that will listen to the cries of children like Elijah, their parents, and those who hope to raise their family in this community. The children have spoken; the future and hopeful parents, me, of this school system has spoken. Public schools have fought for equal and equitable access to education for women, persons of color, persons with disabilities, the LGBTQ+ community, and so much more that goes unrecognized. Thank you for your efforts in areas of injustice that you are passionate about to make this community better. Thank you for your time, and I hope the school district will be welcoming to new ideas in how to solve climate change in your strategic plan. I ask the Cedar Rapids School Board to declare a climate emergency to ensure the safety and well-being of every learner to be future-ready.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Betsy. Next, next we have Scott Drzaminski.
Good evening, Board. Scott Drzaminski, 6801 Springwood Place Northwest, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Cedar Rapids Community School Foundation. Karen Swanson, our Executive Director, is with me this evening. President Humble, School Board Members, and Superintendent Bush, thank you for your time today. It's been a few, busy few months for the foundation, and so, I wanted to come back and give you an update over on our work over the last quarter. I'm pleased to share with you that we're going to be adding three new trustees to our board in January. This includes our second student trustee. Some of you may know Quentin Gay, who has graduated this spring from Washington High School, and he served as our first student trustee and, and set a very high bar for future student trustees from, from that, that will have to meet in the future there. Also leaving us at the end of this year is Sue Pence. Some of you may know Sue. Sue was a trustee with us for nine years and, and has had a huge impact on the foundation, as well as her family's impact on, on getting the foundation started. And so, we will miss Sue, although, I'm pleased to share that when we do our nominating slate and vote on that here later this month, Sue will be nominated, and I'm sure probably, elected as an emeritus member, and she'll join Bob Reitz, our other emeritus member. And essentially, what that allows us to do is they can remain involved in the foundation efforts, attend meetings as they like, and we get to ride their coattails in their impact that they have around the community. We will formally elect our new members here later this month. We will also have to set forth in replacing another member from our board. We're going to really work hard to try to find someone named Jennifer who wants to someday be on the school board so that we can keep up our trend, but we do appreciate all that, that both of our Jennifers that are now school board members have done for us, and Jen Newman is leaving our, our trustee board so she can join yours. Apparently, it's a better gig. So, congratulations to her, and thank you for your service, Jen, to, to the foundation. Thank you for those board members who were able to join us for our Lip Sync for Learning event. Once again, a very successful event that we raised fifteen thousand dollars. Thanks to Akwi for being our, our host for the event last month, and congratulations to McGrath Powersports, the grand champion, and Van Meter, our People's Choice winner. A big thank you to District staff, faculty, and leadership who chose to support the foundation during the recent combined charitable campaign. Staff members will provide twenty-five thousand dollars to the foundation over the coming year through donations that they make in, in their payroll deduction. That makes the, the staff of this district the third-largest giver of funds to the foundation. So, that's a huge impact for us, so we're very grateful for that. Our current strategic plan included an effort to recognize that as an organization with assets over a million dollars, we needed to adjust from more of a volunteer basis for our bookkeeping and, and bookkeeping to, to a professional staff. So, we have a Cedar Rapids Jefferson grad who does our bookkeeping now, and, and we just formally filed our 990 report, the first one done on a professional manner. So, we think that's really important, that our, our donors, those who receive our funds, and of course, the district have the necessary assurances that we, as a foundation, are being fiscally responsible and, and we are avoiding financial risks as an organization. I always like to share a thank you note. This one comes to us from the Hoover Students. It says, "Cedar Rapids Community School Foundation, thank you for new library books and a CD player. Sincerely, the Hoover Students." They have the ability to listen to the books on the CDs now and then go back and, and read those books after they've had the chance to read it, and that was a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar grant, again, made possible by the wonderful donors that we have, the foundation. In closing, I want to say, thank you very much. This will be my last presentation to the school board as the Chair of the Cedar Rapids School Foundation. I'm not leaving the trustee board, but I will be stepping down, and you will see Dr. Chris Tyler, who is a Cedar Rapids, Washington grad, who will take my place and give you quarterly updates here in the coming year. So, thank you again for letting me come and share updates, for the support that you give to the foundation and the chance we have, the partnership. I should probably also publicly say thanks to Karen for putting up with me for the last few years. It has been a distinct honor to work together with you in partnership to make sure every student is future-ready. So, thank you very much.
And thank you very much. And next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like to pull for comments, questions, or a separate vote? Seeing none, the consent agenda requires a roll call due to the personnel report.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Borchadeem?
Aye.
Director Mersbrock?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye. And next, we'll move on to administration. We'll hear from Dave Nicholson. First, he will address the annual request for the School Budget Review Committee, followed by a brief presentation on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
First off, there you go. All right. First off, on, on the approvals for the School Budget Review Committee, we have two items that we need the board to act upon. It's, it's for the allowable growth for the unfunded English-language learners. That's the deficit component of us serving that population of our, our students. And that amount for FY, would have been FY19, came out to be one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, nine ninety-eight. So, that's the deficit that we ran in serving those kids. And also, we have an opportunity to ask for approval for our total of open enrollment students, um, not included in a previous year's enrollment number, and that's something that we can do every year, and that number, actually, I had this flip-flop. Open enrollment is one million.
Okay.
Take that back. Is one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, nine ninety-eight. That's our open enrollment number, and English-language learners is, a deficit is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred. So, sorry about that.
That it?
That's it.
Is there any discussion at all? This requires a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you.
And for the, the next item, the CAFR, I'm going to actually have Heidi Holbrook with RSM, and she's going to do an overview, a presentation for you on this, a quick overview, and so, I'm going to turn it over to Heidi.
Thank you, Dave. I think they're going to display-
I think they're going to display the PowerPoint for me. Thank you. And then you also have a bound, mine's black and white, but you have a bound colored one that was handed out this evening. This is a summary of the audit results this year. So, my agenda is to go over some communications with the board, provide some information on some summarized June 30, 2019, financial performance, and then discuss the compliance reporting. Everything I'm covering this evening is included in the bound report that Dave handed out to you, and also the stapled packet. So, if there's anything I cover that you want to look at in more detail, it would be in one of those two items. So, first, I'll start with the auditor communication. As your auditors, our responsibility is to come in and audit the district under three sets of standards. The first one is over the financial statements, and those are the generally accepted auditing standards that we perform testing under those standards. And that tells you whether or not your financial statements are materially correct or not. You received an unmodified or clean opinion. That's the best opinion you can receive over your financial statements. And what that tells you is that your financial statements are materially correct based on our testing. We'll talk about the two other standards later in the presentation, but we also audit under governmental auditing standards, and then also audit your federal programs under the uniform guidance. And we'll talk about those results later. In the current year, management did adopt a new accounting policy, and it really just required some additional disclosure within the financial statements themselves. So, there was no change in how information was being accounted for within the statements, but some additional disclosure around your debt. And what the standard setters are requiring now is that if you have any debt that's privately held or a single institution purchases your revenue bonds, which you do have, then it just has to be disclosed that, to the users, that those are direct placements or direct borrowings. So, just a minor change in the disclosure, but provides users wanting to know about your debt a little bit more information. As always, your financial statements do include management judgments and estimates. As part of the auditing process, we look at those that are significant. Those are detailed out in the communication to the board. But in summary, we believe they were all reasonable. There were no new significant estimates as part of this year's audit. And then, we do perform additional procedures over there to, around those to be comfortable with management's judgments, and we use outside information to come to our own estimates. So, no concerns over any of those. There was no audit adjustments through the process. We also look, when we're performing an audit, sometimes we come across what we call uncorrected misstatements. These are adjustments that aren't material to your financial statements, but are above a threshold that we're required to report them. So, there were two in the current year. One was related to timing of information. For your local option sales tax, you receive what we call a true-up payment in November. It's kind of a catch-up payment. And management, using the information they had available to them at year-end, performed an estimate. We are lucky enough, as the auditors, to know what the actual amount is before we issue the report. And there was a $213,000 difference there, so we show that as an uncorrected item, and management will correct that in fiscal year 2020. But not large enough to misstate the financial statements. And then, the second item was a carryforward. There were some capital assets that had a difference in the cost that was recorded within the books. So, that's continuing to be depreciated, so it's still over the threshold, that net amount of the value of the capital assets related to some business-type activities. There were no disagreements with management, nor did we discuss any significant issues with management, and we did not encounter any difficulties of performing the audit. I'd also like, with that comment, to thank all of the district staff, especially Dave and Sherry and the staff in the finance department, but also all those throughout the district that help us through the audit. We couldn't complete the audit with all of their assistance and the time they dedicate to answering our questions and providing us information. So, I do want to thank them for that. Next, we'll move over some financial results. This first item is the revenue for all your governmental funds, including your general fund. Overall, you saw an increase of revenues of about $5.9 million or 2.3%. Some of the, none of them had, from the chart, a large amount of difference, but those that I would touch on, your local taxes increased because of your property taxes related to levies. State sources, your largest increase there was your local option sales tax. That saw about a $2 million increase in the current year. And then, also, your federal sources. This includes those federal grants that you received throughout the year, and you received some additional funding through the LINK grant, or what we call the research and development cluster that we'll talk about a little bit later, too. Then, as a result of those revenues, we show you the expenditures by function, again, for all those governmental funds. All expenditures in total had an increase of about $4.6 million or about 2%, so very consistent with your increase in revenues. Those areas that saw the larger amount of increase would be instruction, which had about a 2.4% increase, and support services, which had about an 8% increase. The majority of those increases are related to payroll costs and benefits, as would be expected. And then, in addition, the support services also had some additional vehicle expenditures in the current year. There was a significant decrease in debt service of about $4.3 million. That was just due to normal payments. In the prior year, there was a bond that was actually paid off with a final payment in that, because that payment wasn't there and there was no debt replacing it, it just caused a decrease in the overall debt service. This one is a summary of the statement of revenue expenditures and change in net position for your enterprise funds. For the district, your enterprise funds consist of your nutrition and your daycare services. Operating revenues were down about $300,000, while operating expenses were up about $529,000. The increase in operating expenses, again, were mainly related to payroll costs and benefits, and then also some additional supply costs. The non-operating revenues, the largest part of that is your federal grant that you receive for the student nutrition program. And while that does pay for operating expenses, it's required under the standards to be shown in this bucket. That did increase about $780,000. So, the net change in net position for all your enterprise funds in the current year was just under $313,000. And then, the last piece is the compliance reporting. As I mentioned earlier, first, we'll talk about the governmental auditing standards. This is where we look at your internal controls or the checks and balances over your financial statements. And based on our testing, we have no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report. Not only do we gain an understanding of those internal controls, but we also perform testing over that, and then also the results of our other audit testing is considered when evaluating for deficiencies. We also look at instances of non-compliance related to the financial statements, and there were none. The state of Iowa, the auditor's office does require that we report certain state items related to compliance. And there were two items there. Again, these are required by the state of Iowa to be reported. The first one is related to certified enrollment. This is one that we see every year at every school district. And what happens is, after the enrollment information is sent to the state, they do a reconciliation and provide any differences to the district. The district reconciles, and they either agree or work with the state. In the current year, there was an adjustment of 6.52 of students in enrollment as a result of that. The second item, again, we're required to report is the deficit net position balance. Your daycare funds have a deficit fund balance of about $1 million. The main reason for this is the net pension liability that was recorded. It's about five years now that it was added on for financial reporting purposes. That's part of that deficit. That's a long-term liability. You're not collecting current revenues to pay for those future liabilities. You're only collecting in your revenues what you're required to pay in contributions in the current year. So, it's not unusual for these type of enterprise funds to show a deficit balance once districts and other governmental entities had to start reporting the pension liability. Then, the last thing is the single audit. This is where we look at your federal programs. The uniform guidance dictates what we test under that program and provides us parameters. So, in the current year, we tested two programs that we call major programs, the student nutrition services cluster and the R&amp;D cluster, which was mainly made up of the LINK grant. Those were tested in detail. So, there are certain compliance requirements that we have to test and ensure that everything is being followed and the dollars are being spent appropriately. Based on that testing, you received an unmodified or clean opinion on both of those programs. And a result of that testing, also, no compliance findings were reported or deficiencies. So, both programs were very clean this year. And then, the two programs that we did test accounted for about 50% of your federal dollars expended during the fiscal year. That's all I have for a formal presentation this evening, but I would first thank you for your time and then open it up for any questions that you may have.
Any questions at all? Well, Dave, I want to thank you for doing such a great job for the district. To thank you for that, that you are a good steward of the monies of the district, so.
President Humble.
Yes.
And I just want to follow up on that, too, that compliment, Dave, and our accounting department. I've seen many of the CAFR reports, and this is probably one of the cleanest ones that I have seen. So, again, my, my congratulations to the fine work that they are doing.
Thank you so much.
It is a relief when you're sitting in Finance 101 at convention and you're overwhelmed with the numbers to think that you do the math and not me.
And there were a lot of numbers to look at. So, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
This requires us to vote, a voice vote. All in favor of accepting the comprehensive annual financial report? Say aye, by saying aye, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move forward. Next, we'll move to learning and leadership. We'll have the district's strategic plan, student learning. I'll turn this over to John for tonight's presentation. Laurel, my computer has gone down. I don't know what happened here. Go ahead.
Thanks, everyone. Our purpose tonight is to share the results of our state assessment, which was done in the spring. Those results were released last month. This is a very important measure for us. As Superintendent Bush mentioned, this is the way we measure our student, our system health in many ways. So, today is more about sharing the baseline data of where we are as a system and a little bit focused on what the assessment is, because it's a brand-new assessment. So, I'll spend about five or six minutes giving you a quick run-through. If you have any questions, I imagine you might, please write those down, and we'll save time at the end for all the discussion we need to do to talk about state assessments. So, first, I want to mention that this is one of our focus areas. So, this is focus area number two as part of our strategic plan, just so we're grounded in where this fits. And again, as Superintendent Bush mentioned, these are part of our system indicators down below. Our academic goals that I'm going to share are fourfold. There's one additional one that doesn't show up, so that's even more exciting, fun data for you to consider. So, first is the ISASP overview. So, ISASP is the term I'm going to say many, many times. And I apologize that the PDFs you received over the weekend did not include the formatting, so you should have a new color copy today that's a little cleaner. Apologize for that. So, ISASP, I'll give you the acronym here. It's the Iowa Statewide Assessment of Student Progress. And we'll just say ISASP for consistency and conciseness sake. But it's a once-a-year summit of measure for English, language arts, math, and science. Grades three through 11 take this assessment, but for science, it's only grades three, five, and eight. I'm sorry, five, eight, and 10. Got that mixed up. So, once per level there. So, those are the scores. It's different in a number of ways than our previous assessments, so it's a brand-new benchmark. So, the purpose of this statewide assessment every spring is to measure proficiency of the Iowa Core Standards. We are required to teach the standards, and that is our purpose and our mission. And we want to know if we're doing that correctly and reaching proficiency for our students. And so, this assessment measures that. The previous Iowa assessments did not measure that in the same way. And so, this is a fundamentally different test. And so, the first thing on the Department of Education's FAQ is, don't compare the results to previous years. So, there's only one slide in there that has previous year's numbers, and I'll explain why when we get there. So, totally different baseline score as a result. Here's some of the key differences. One, this is an untimed assessment. It's also happened, it also was required to happen during the spring as to various times throughout the year. Students are allowed to use calculators, for example. There's now an essay component instead of just multiple choice. So, there's lots of substantive changes on this assessment that make it very different from previous years. So, those are there. So, where are we and how did we do on this assessment from the spring related to our academic goals? So, I'll share four goals and kind of how we are doing on those. So, our first goal is growth. That's our most important thing, to see that 80% of students will meet growth goals. Unfortunately, we don't have any, because it's a baseline year. So, we don't know what it means to grow, because this is the first year. So, in the spring of 2020, we'll be able to know how students are growing, but that first goal is not currently able to be measured. The state was not able to make a calculation for us. So, baseline year, we look forward to coming back where that was. Historically, we've been around 50% for growth. Our second goal is proficiency, and our hope is that at least 80% of students will score proficient or advanced in each of those subject areas. And our current results are on the screen. So, in ELA, we're at 67% as a district, in math, 62, and at science, 54. And I put the statewide averages on the right-hand column, so you could see a comparative amount. Not that we're comparing year-over-year, but there was a change across the state in district scores as a result of this new assessment. And Cedar Rapids saw a comparable change, actually slightly less than other schools, but comparable, particularly acute in science. So, I also broke down the results by elementary, middle, and high, so you could see those. And I'll just leave them up briefly. Again, not to spend a lot of time commenting on those particularly, but just so you have them, relatively speaking. Science in elementary is our lowest particular category, and so that was one of particular concern as we reviewed these numbers. We see the same in middle school, for middle school, closer to the state average in ELA, much further behind in math, and nearly comparable in science. And then, finally, high school as our highest overall group of results, much closer to the state averages in nearly every category. All right. Our third goal is advanced. So, we want students to score, twice as many students to score advanced as did in 2019. When you score on the test, there's three possibilities students can get. You can score not yet proficient, or proficient, or advanced. And we want all of our, 80% of our students to be in that proficient or advanced category. And we had a particular goal around advanced, as because many students said, or many, and teachers as well, let's not focus only on students who are not yet proficient. Let's make sure we're pushing all of our students across our system to grow. This one is not in our strategic system indicators, but it's one that we're also paying attention to. When I shared this last year with the board, we showed our 2017 numbers, and the 2017 numbers are in parentheses. And so, I highlighted those just to say that there was a significant change with this new, more rigorous assessment in how many students were performing advanced. And so, we've rewritten this goal to say, we're going to try to double these numbers between 2019 and 2022 as opposed to that 2017 number, given the big change in the new test. So, hopefully, that's clear. So, here's where we were a year ago on the right and where we currently are, given that. And again, that's very comparable with the state. And to share that, this slide shows you how Cedar Rapids is doing. So, we're a little bit higher than the state average in the advanced category, a little bit below in math, and comparable for science. All right. And our fourth and final academic goal is around equity, as Noreen mentioned. And we're looking at three groups in particular, how our white and African-American students are doing, how our English learners are doing relative to non-English learners, and how our students on IEPs are doing. And our goal is to reduce the gaps in each of those groups by 20% by 2022. As you can see, the gaps are stark and wide and of concern. This is the difference between our white and African-American students related to proficiency. For non-EL and EL students, the gap is a little bit wider. And then, finally, our students with and without IEPs, we can see a very noticeable gap as well. And so, this is the collective work that we're accomplishing across the system, making sure that we are targeting and focusing on all of these student groups. Sorry, Laurel. I really ran as fast as I could. All right. I got almost there. Next steps. All right. So, our next steps, we have many of our strategies in place that we're already on these, attacking these initiatives. I think that's listed on the strategic roadmap. I think that's listed on the strategic roadmap. I will just highlight, there was a few extra things that we saw once we reached this dataset in the last month that we added a few extra things that we want to target based on the results we saw. Additional teacher training in math and science, making sure that we're getting standards-aligned curricula that are being measured by the state assessment. We're going to continue to invest in some supplemental digital content that can provide some personalized pathway to kids, and then consider some departmentalization in elementary school. That would be fourth and fifth grade where just teachers are teaching reading or math. That's it.
Questions?
I do have a few questions. The first one is around the standards-aligned curriculum. And I'm just hoping that there are some efforts to align core content and curriculum from elementary, middle, and middle to high so that when we're looking at a graduated rate of proficiencies, percentage-wise, we're actually able to make some sound comparisons.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great point. Our content leads have organized themselves in K-12 teams and meet regularly as K-12 to make sure they're vertically aligned. Some good examples of that are our math team, for the first time, is adopting a K-12 math resource. So everyone will be getting similar training around a similar content area and not switching from Pearson to Glenn Coe to et cetera, et cetera, as you move up the levels. Our ELA team as well in sixth through 12 picked anchor texts so that kids aren't reading the same book in sixth grade as they're reading in eighth grade, as they're reading in 10th grade, depending on the school. So that collectively, we're considering our guaranteed and viable curriculum to make sure we're covering all these standards, K through 12, in the right sequence. And so I think the alignment is recent, but will be very powerful.
I think that's especially important, being as we now have our magnet schools and where we've got students that may not be streaming into their traditional feeder. So we need to be very conscious of that from a district level to make sure that we're providing the same base for growth.
Totally agree.
Thank you.
Could you go back to the equity slide back so I could see those?
Which, yes.
So I'm looking at, you know, the percentages there. So what are we putting in place to increase that percentage? Because it's, there's a huge difference here.
Yeah, I think.
So what is in, what is being put in place now as well as the future to up the scores for?
Would you like to kind of share some of the stuff that preexisted me?
John is seeing me nod my head, nod my head. And these have been conversations since I arrived two years ago. Not to generalize too much, but really the high reliability schools framework that we've adopted drills in at the school level. Some of our schools have gotten really systemic around their professional learning community work. So that's the acronym we use is PLCs, but that early out Friday, that's the targeted time for many of our schools or some of them have before or after opportunities as well. But for teacher teams to look at their students, how their students are performing on formative assessment work that they've created within their teams aligned to standardized curriculum, and that they adjust their instruction accordingly to help all of our kids. What's really interesting to watch is there have been some shining stars in our system that we've been able to look at, schools that are actually closing those gaps, or even down to a grade-level team that's closing a gap and that for some reason they've become an anomaly. So then we're studying the practice that that particular team is doing, and what it comes down to is, one, the foundation of high reliability schools framework, it's a team that really gets to know their kids, safe, supportive, collaborative environment, and that relationship first. Two, they've gotten acute about their instruction, and they have targeted instructional practices and adopted our instructional framework of the new art and science of teaching. I don't know if we'll know the full impact of our instructional framework because all of our teachers are now through that training just this fall. It was a three-year journey to get every teacher through our instructional framework. And then the guaranteed and viable curriculum is that third level of the high reliability schools framework. So that's overall encompassing, but there are some personalized learning strategies. The letters training that's been adopted and is beginning that implementation plan of our K-2 teams. They're getting trained in what's called letters training. That is a very clear way to teach literacy, phonemic awareness. And if we can get that K-2 reading, it actually impacts how they think about math, and then we see results moving forward. So those are some general things we're doing for all students, but closing the gap specifically for our targeted demographic students. It comes down to teachers knowing their students and a personal relationship, and then some intervention strategies. We also are required from the state level with our FAST assessment screening to keep track of our students, but then articulate the strategies specifically we're doing for them and keep track of their data. So even if that weren't a requirement, we have found that's going to be our best practice, is student data tracking and what interventions working with what students.
And I think this is a beginning of a conversation.
And that's very helpful to know.
We had each of our principals look at their school's results and if they were below or above this average and to consider those students. And now they know who in their building this is and where their proficiency lies. I should give a shout-out to our English Language Arts team. In the last year, they invested $75,000 in a brand-new set of curriculum that was culturally responsive and diverse, and so there are characters and authors who are people of color, who are people with disabilities, who are immigrants, telling a much broader range. And so I think diversifying our curriculum in particular allows our students to see themselves in the learning in a way that perhaps was not previously available.
And thank you. That, that's a very good explanation. So folks know that we are doing something. So thank you, Norine, too.
Yeah, thanks for the high level.
Yes.
Two additional questions. One is about the IEP testing and the test scores. Having worked with special ed in the past, I know that there is a group of our special ed students that take an alternative assessment. So does this data that we're looking at for IEP scores encompass that alternative assessment scores as well, or are those separate?
Not include alternate assessment students. We use those for a different dataset.
So I'm assuming that the IEP, there are allowed accommodations on this testing. I've not seen what an.
Yep, and I would say they were brand-new accommodations this year. There was a new state guideline of what accommodations were and were not allowed.
Oh.
And given that the test was untimed, we had schools say, hey, it took us 10 days to administer this to some of our students because we gave them hours and hours and hours, which was totally legitimate under the new rules. So knowing that that was a pain point, we extended the testing window from two weeks to three weeks this spring to allow for much more accommodations to make sure that they're adequately administered. We don't want anyone to have to rush through or not have the appropriate accommodations based on that, so that was a big pain point. I appreciate you mentioning that.
Good foresight there. And then. This is, this is kind of a silly question. Well, I don't really think so. Is there an estimate on the longevity of this ISASP as an assessment tool? I mean, are we going to be, is this, this is something that's new?
So I would say my prediction would be it's here to stay for a while. There was a state task force went through a very robust process to adopt the new assessment. The RFP process was completed by a state-level committee, which included actually people from our community, both parent and educators. So across the state, that task force made a recommendation, and then it went through another hurdle. And so this is where it landed, and I believe it's here to stay for a while. I don't know if I could define a while, but definitely consecutively this year, we know it's going to be the test, and I would predict next year, too. So my hope would be that it, enough for us to get some grounding to actually use it as that continual informative work.
Right.
This particular test is formatted, it is very, very rigorous. And for the product pieces, I appreciate the tea table slide that Mr. Rice has provided here. To construct an essay versus a multiple-choice test is a very different product for our students. And I appreciate that product because it aligns with our profile of a graduate and what we're hoping for kids for is effective communication. So my hope would be that it will be here for a while and help us inform our practice.
Excellent. Thank you.
President Humble. I, I have my hand in the air, but I don't think you can see it.
Well, no, I cannot see it.
I have a couple, I have a couple of comments. One, Superintendent just mentioned one that this is, we need to remember that this is a vastly different kind of test that had the open-ended questions, there's the written component that we have not had before. It was more than just a multiple choice. And also the fact that there was the use of computers, or could have been the use of computers, but I know that not every middle school student in particular had access to the computers because of the shortage or number of computers within the building. And the other is that we remember that this is just a one-shot, short period of evaluation, and we don't base our whole, every student, every learner ready by just the one assessment. We have multiple assessments to see that we are moving in the right direction. And the question that as board members, could we see individual breakout of, by building of the results?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have what's probably a rookie question here.
Thank you.
So when I look at the disparities for IEP and also just the equity questions, and thinking about the achievement gap here, when I see the next steps, which next steps are really addressing really more of the whole student versus, I mean, we're talking about additional teacher training and implementation of standards. Which of these next steps that we talk about here are really focused on addressing the issues that are keeping these kids from excelling versus training the teachers better or, you know, thinking about standards?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I'm not sure that the slides probably captured the nuance you're mentioning, and so I'm glad I can get a chance to say it. So part of the reason we're seeing a disparity in how students with IEPs and EL students perform is because they are not always or have not always been taught to the standards. The sometimes idea was we're going to teach them a special curriculum or we're going to give them different things. We're not necessarily attaining standards, and our message has been clear, and the state's message has been clear. We want all students to attain standard mastery, and that's been a change in pedagogical practice. So when I say implementation of standards-aligned curricula, that is one of the key ways that we're encouraging IEP goals, for example, to now be written around standards, which has not been done before. Our EL students to get instruction in their native language when necessary, but also held to reach standards-aligned goals as well. So that's new, although that sounds very basic, but that's part of the reason that that's up there.
And I would add on the previous slide, these are the strategies from our comprehensive strategic plan. For example, our focus on equity and access through our digital literacy access plan. I just had anecdote after anecdote in our high schools, specifically around our, our English language learning students, that they now have access to a device all day long that can help them translate and gain access to content that they didn't necessarily have at their fingertips before. That plan actually started with our students who qualified for special education. We had many students who actually did have devices and access to devices. So using that, whether it be for text-to-speech or speech-to-text tools, and giving them constant means to the way, knowing how they learn, and giving student agency and technology access to the, the tool will never replace the instructor, but might be a link that they didn't have before. So we're finding that there are specific things that we can do within our digital literacy and technology plan. We have digital literacy trainers in each school that focus as coaches around that work. But also, this is what I found, as a pack of kids sitting with other kids, teaching each other how to use. We have Read/Write Google, Read/Write for Google, which is a tool that all students and staff actually have access to that acts as a speech-to-text tool, a highlighting tool, an audio tool, will read anything aloud to them on the screen. And you can actually pick, pick the voice that you want and the, the language that you want to have that translation. So those are some of the steps.
I would just add that inequity starts at a very young age, and it compounds itself over time. And math, for example, builds on itself over the years. So given that this test, did I understand this, it's given at five, eight, and 10? Grades five, eight, and 10?
Just for science, for ELA and math, it's three through 11.
So when we think about these strategies, I think what I'm trying to get across here is, are we doing things at younger ages to ensure that, not just that they're teaching to those standards, but also that we're addressing kids who are facing inequity or facing something that allows them to not come to school whole, not come to school ready to learn? That's a big part of it, and I just, I don't see that in those strategies specifically, and I'm just wondering if that's a piece of it that's being looked at.
Yeah, and that might be the focus area number one in our strategic plan around school culture and having warm, safe, collaborative, accepting environments, and yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to. Culture has a lot of those things relative. Also, family engagement. Just how are we engaging with those families to understand some of the challenges that they have, but also to engage them in the education process? So that whole first area around culture is, is how we're trying to get at some of that, particularly at the earlier ages. Having the pre-K in our buildings, that really helps make sure that students are engaging in their education early in their development.
Thank you.
Mr. Dilly, could you define what IDI stands for? I think that, thank you. We have some.
Inter-cultural Development Inventory. So that whole process comes that a building will go through some professional development together. Each individual, each staff member will do an assessment so that they can understand on this continuum of intercultural understanding where they sit, and they get that feedback. They put together a personal development plan, and then we take the building through for professional developments throughout the course of the year to continue to grow their mindset.
I have a question about one of your next steps.
Hit me.
You listed the last one there, potential departmentalization in elementary school.
Well, you picked the controversial one.
Well, I just was unaware that that was being discussed, so I'm just wondering if someone can update us on where we're at in that conversation.
Sure. We have seven schools currently participating in a federal Department of Education study on the effects of departmentalization. Several of those are opting not to change their model, and several are opting to change it, and they keep that model the same for two years. And the definition of departmentalization by the Federal Department of Ed is just reading and just math taught by different instructors. And so the idea there is that our fourth and fifth grade teachers, instead of teaching all subjects, are going to basically reduce their class load in half and really specialize in one of those two areas. So particularly as we get to upper elementary levels in reading and math, the content becomes very specialized and very challenging. And so for a teacher to specialize in just math and perhaps science gives them an opportunity to go deeper with the content and do that twice a day instead of teaching all subjects. And so a couple of schools are doing that. I believe Erskine is one of the leaders in that, and I'm glad Annette's here to maybe even answer something about that. But we've got other schools that are interested in exploring that, so this is not.
What's the other school besides Erskine?
There's probably four schools that are departmentalized, but as part of the study, it's Erskine, Garfield, and Nixon. Thank you.
So I have a question about that departmentalization. So is that a teacher indicator? Does a teacher say, this is something I would like to do, or is it, is that kind of based on, you know, we see that you're having really high scores for reading in your class? Would you consider specializing in reading?
Would you like to take that one, Annette?
You're going to have to.
So when we started as a part of the pilot this year, we worked with the folks in Mathematica Research, and they came. And we looked at what structures would look like in our building, teacher strengths. We looked at previous instructional data, and then some feedback from the teacher teams, too. So each one of the three of the buildings that are participating in this pilot this year are doing things just a little bit differently to fit the needs of their students. But we pulled all of that data and all of that information together before we made. pulled all of that data and all of that information together before we made those schedules.
Thank you.
Just, just a comment, a follow-up on that, that I have taught in buildings where they have, at the upper elementary, they have been departmentalized, and it worked very well when a teacher could prep for just one rather than three different areas, if you had, if you had a three-section school.
Any other questions at all?
I have a question. Kind of off something that Superintendent Bush was saying earlier in terms of teachers and teams tracking the standards, you know, in their own way, within their teams and within the classroom. Do we have any district-wide, non-test, you know, methods to track how our students are doing, or is it just this test and our test that we talked about earlier? Or is it just in the individual teams where they're doing stuff like that?
So we have an assessment system that has four levels. So the first one is the State Summit of Assessment, and that's the once-a-year one that we talked about today. The second level is our Benchmark Assessments. And so Benchmark Assessments happen three times a year. So the elementary uses FAST in reading and math, and the middle schools use I-Ready, which is another measure of reading and math that they take multiple times. Middle schools taking it this week or finishing up this week, which gives us a third-party perspective that's predictive of performance on ISASP that folks can use for instruction. And the idea behind the benchmark is that way you don't have to wait a year to find out, or in this case, months after, how students are performing at the high level. The third level is our Common Formative Assessments. So many content areas, particularly at the elementary level, have common assessments that they give every few weeks that commonly assess in a very ongoing way how students are doing towards standards mastery. And then the fourth level is Teacher Formative Assessment. So that's something that a teacher might create and come up with that they can quickly do, whether it's fist-to-five, whether it's an exit ticket, there's tons and tons of ways students are being formatively assessed by their teachers.
And so they're kind of doing that? And so they don't have necessarily like a district-wide thing where they have like a portfolio of, you know, work that they've done throughout the year to show standards, but those things are kind of-
So in 6th through 12th grade in ELA, there is a district writing assignment that happens quarterly. And so that can be collected into a portfolio, and instead of giving the kids a test, we're actually using that writing product into more authentic performances to see if that's still qualifying as standard mastery, a little more project-based learning.
Okay. And then going back to the equity slide, are those the only categories that we are tracking and, you know, coming up with goals for, you know, the Latino population and our students? Are we tracking any achievement gap? I believe, you know, we had an achievement gap in that population on the previous assessment, but we're not looking at it here.
The answer is yes, we're tracking those. The things that we're targeting for our strategic plan are the students that are with the widest gaps, with the most disadvantage historically, and this is common across other school districts in America, that these groups tend to be the ones that are marginalized in ways that are not intended. And so we wanted to make sure there was a particular focus between these three groups. But all of them are being tracked for Andrew's lunch, and et cetera.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question. And then we talked earlier about the data that you got, that this is based off of, should we be asking the state for more transparency in terms of the whole data product, or just maybe a better product that they're delivering? So the school districts are all kind of looking at the same thing, and instead of having to come up with, you know, the work on our end? Should that, is that something that we should advocate for, in your opinion?
So the state provided us the school-level results and then grade-level results. What the state did not provide was, here's the Cedar Rapids summary that we could relative, compare to the Lynnmar summary or the Des Moines summary. So I think that would certainly be something that would be interesting, how they would report as a district, so all Iowa districts have common language, because I had to make this fun PowerPoint, but I didn't mind. But it would have been nice if there was a state-provided district summary.
This is a, that was a discussion amongst superintendents at the Iowa Association School Board Conference as well.
Yeah, I was hoping to get, you know, kind of a different dataset on this, but it's apparently not available. So it'd be nice to have that, just from a transparency for the public to know that, you know, they could look at this data, you know, for themselves and see it.
I do think it's the intent of the state to get to that point. We did just get the results in November, and the kids took the test in May, so that tells you how long it took for us to get the results. I do think that's the intent of the state, is to broaden the scope of, and expedite the results in the future. But advocacy would be important, I think, from the school level of what our greatest hopes are, to get the full story beyond just individual schools, but our entire district, our region, and the state.
Okay.
And if there are custom reports that you'd be interested in doing, we can always pull those and create them, but, you know, it would be nice if they were kind of ready to go. But, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, John. We'll be looking forward to your next update.
Oh, me too.
Thank you so much. I'd like to remind folks to make sure you take a copy of your school calendar. But before we leave, I'd like to have a moment of silence. I will turn this meeting over to Linda.
Good evening. So as customary here at the Cedar Rapids School District, when we have employees who pass away, we like to honor them by doing a moment of silence. So this evening, we have unfortunately two individuals that we will be recognizing. The first individual, Net Zimmerman, we'll recognize, and then we will have Jason Klein come up and recognize the second individual. And then at the very end of that, we'll do a moment of silence led by Nancy.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Erskine staff, students, and families, thank you for taking this moment tonight to honor the passing of our crossing guard, Bob Rodriguez. Bob served at the busy intersection of 38th and Mount Vernon Road for 15 years. We could always count on Grandpa Bob, as we fondly called him, to be there no matter what the conditions. Through rain, snow, arctic blast, and the never-ending construction on Mount Vernon Road, Bob served his post faithfully. Not only was Bob our crossing guard, but many of his grandchildren were also Erskine students. Bob would stop in often in the building after his morning duties, just to check and see how everything was going and check on his grandkids. Now, most of you did not know Grandpa Bob the crossing guard, but you may have fond memories of Papa Wans. Bob opened the downtown location of Papa Wans, named after his father, in the early 1970s. Bob was the loving father of four sons and four daughters, and was adored by his 18 grandchildren. As we observe this moment of silence tonight, let us remember the dedication and service that Bob gave to the Erskine students.
As well, on behalf of the Kennedy family, very thankful that you gave us an opportunity to remember Rita. Rita Devaney was the epitome of love. She rescued animals and people at every opportunity. She had a passion for sports, country music, and advocating for people. Rita's most cherished roles in life were that of mother and girlfriend. Rita's life was blessed with so much love from family, friends, and coworkers and students. Rita was a member of the Kennedy family since 2018, working as a one-on-one pair professional with students. She was the kind of person who was very devoted to some of our most at-risk kids. She came in every day with a positive attitude and with one goal in mind, to help our students. She was always good for a granola bar, a listening ear, or a kind word. Students found Rita to be someone they could consistently trust and rely upon for support. She will be greatly missed as a member of our Kennedy family and of our behavior-focused team. While her tenure at Kennedy was only one year, she built relationships that will never be forgotten, and taught many of us that the simple act of kindness can go a long way. Rita's final gift to the world came as an organ donor for the Iowa Donor Network. As we observe this moment of silence in memory of Rita, let us remember the lives of the students and staff that she has positively impacted throughout her career as an employee of our district.
We'll have a moment of silence here, please. Our prayers go out to the families who will be truly missed, and thank you, and thank them and their families. With nothing else, I'd like to remind the board to fill out your meeting evaluations, and at this time, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.